Thank you. I knew something was off this morning. Let's try this again. It's a Monday. It's a Monday. And it is February 5th, and it's 10 o'clock. And this is City Council's regularly scheduled work session. And work sessions are the meeting that council has with staff. And we go over many of the items that will be on upcoming city council meetings. And we don't vote in work session. It gives council a chance to ask questions and hear about each item in depth and prepare us for future city council meetings when we would vote on an item. And therefore, since we're not voting, we don't do any public comment during work sessions. We ask the public to hold their comments to our meetings when we're voting. But we do hear from guests during these meetings, like an applicant for the grant will be with us this morning. And so that's what work sessions are all about. And we just jump right in and start. So we're going to move things around a little on our agenda this morning. And we're going to take Item C, which is the Commercial Kitchen Grant application. We're going to move that to the first thing on our agenda and start there because of some of our guests' and staff's availability to talk about this issue. So this is a Commercial Kitchen Grant application for Stockman's and Ruby June's Restaurants. And Anthony, are you with us online, I believe?
I am. Hello, Barbara. How are you? Or Mrs. Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, it's good, too. You can go ahead and tell us about this, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Basically, what we have today is the Alexander Main Institutes, which, for all those wondering, is the old daily bread building. The tenant is going to be, in this case, Eldorado Holdings, which is going to run two different restaurants in its space. One is Stockman's, which is a traditional kind of bistro style. And then there will be a second restaurant right next door that will be more of a sandwich shop slash small heights, desserts, coffee shop, more cafe style. And that would stay open late, and you would be able to kind of go back and forth between the two. So in this case, here's a, you know, I want to go over a couple of things really quick. The total kitchen cost is going to be $297,146. Total investment on the project is going to be greater than, but right now is at $1,918,307. For the purposes of this grant, we're considering $200,972 only, as we have removed all the components that could be removed from the facility if the restaurants were to close, because we only want to cover the equipment that stays permanently in the facility as the building owner will maintain ownership if the two businesses were to shut down at any point in time. I want to make, call out a couple of points here. The grease trap is very expensive. That's $66,900. The reason why the grease trap is so expensive is because it's part of the rear end of this building where there is an old chute for coal that comes down. And that coal chute is part of the historic structure will have to be removed in order to put in the grease trap. That's important because that chute actually can cause structural issues to the building. And so by removing that, we're actually securing the building and making sure that it will be in good shape long term. So that grease trap going in, that's the only place in the building that it can go. There currently is no grease trap in the building. The previous restaurant was not utilizing one. But that gives you an idea of why that was so expensive. Everything else is pretty much in line with what we've seen in the past. Right now, the total ask of $200,972 sits at about 10.48% of the total investment into the project that projected as of today. And I will turn that over to you, Mrs. Mayor, for any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, if you looked at your packet, you saw that we had extensive information for this request, including entire performance for both restaurants, a lot of budget information and details that go beyond what Mr. Russo just presented. Are there any questions for him at this time?
Not a question, but a verif- wait.
Go ahead. Go ahead, and you start.
How did they come up with these five-year revenue projections? It was interesting. I was on the Internet looking up the Colorado, through the Colorado Restaurant Association, and the revenue projections usually for a small restaurant business like this was considerably under $2 million. It was more in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I was just curious as how they came up with some of these revenues.
I think that's a great opportunity, maybe, to invite the applicant up. Mr. Russo, would that be appropriate? You're not.
Yeah, that would be appropriate. I don't have that information. And I will say that I just looked at the five-year projections on that revenue. And I realized that, for some reason, it's subtracting the bar sales out there for the total instead of adding it, which is why it dropped down to 12 million. I'm not sure. But we would fix that before the next council meeting. I just wanted to point that out. But then you would see the total tax projections there. But Ed, I would say we, go ahead and let Craig speak to that as he is there, or actually Joe and Ben, rather, who I believe Ben is on the call right now.
So we'll start, though, by having Craig introduce himself, and then he can defer to his team. Hi. Good morning.
Good morning.
And just for the record, your name and...
My name is Craig Hasto. Thanks for having me in today. And we are partnering with Joe Coulet and Ben Hally, who's on, by Google Meet here. And to answer your question on the projections of that, they, this would be definitely their restaurant that they're doing. But owning two restaurants myself, we are not at the 2 million mark, but with two concepts, with two restaurants is definitely over in Delta Montrose. So I don't see that being too out of line. But Ben, would you like to speak more on that?
Yes, absolutely. For the group, my name's Ben Holly. I'm a potential partner in working with the city here. I guess, just a touch background on myself, I'm a longtime chef and food and beverage consultant. I've owned and operated several restaurants. I've worked for a bunch of large international groups. I opened The Win and Encore Casino. As a chef, so my background's fairly well-established, but more importantly, a background in opening restaurants and being able to identify, as my key role in that job, where opportunity lies. I'm a former resident of the community, so there's a background there that, I lived in Rico, I lived in Lawson Hill, I lived in Telluride, I lived in Montrose. I'm currently a resident of Las Vegas, but maintain a strong connection with the community via my partner, Joe Coulet, who's a longstanding community member and chef. Based on those understandings and who we are, how do we get to those projections? We looked at the opportunity available in Montrose via our own observations, but then requests of the community at large. Banquets, catering, bakery, commercial bakery, opportunity for students coming out of the recently established culinary program. You know, looking into who exists in the community now, who was there before, and what is this inbound community's desires and demands? And how do you meter those two groups that, on the Western Slope, have been famous for not exactly getting along? And revitalize Main Street using both of those groups as participants, rather than trying to identify just the inbound guest or the historical guest of the business. Main Street needs to represent all of that. Again, Joe's, in my opinion, not something, you know, that I'm boldly proclaiming here. But that being said, we observed that there was opportunity for food and beverage revenues beyond just dinnertime. Right? That there's opportunity in the city from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, on both ends and in the middle, to provide opportunity. And when we focused that on the Main Street area, opportunity in the morning, ripe opportunity during lunch with the new city building, the hotel's development there, but then also the need to drive PM traffic that's positive to that part of town. Create a bar that Joe wants to take people to, to walking distance from his house. Somewhere that, you know, not necessarily is a honky-tonk or it's raucous, but a place that has a strong establishment. So when you ask about the total revenues represented in that performa and why that would stand pale in comparison to what you saw online, observe that inside that, we've effectively probably tackled what would be four or five standalone businesses and put those underneath one roof. Stockman's was something from Montrose, for Montrose, by Montrose. It's a classic. It's been there. It was there. It's a very easy concept for us to define and cook to, and we view it as standing with long, but also being something interesting to inbound guests. The goal of that is to serve great lunch, great dinner, and then be a PM beverage establishment bar, as you may call it, but something that is a positive experience with entertainment. Ruby June is the opposite side of that. Ruby June is a handful of businesses that Joe and I felt like could not stand alone in Montrose. However housed underneath one roof and presented in a tasteful way, we could construct a day that starts at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning and can run till midnight. The ability to operate that small space with a limited-service-style business that meets the demand of the consumer, but also creates a business that is, that now can stand alone. And not so much as an incubator, but the opportunity to take a bunch of experiences that the community may only want three or four nights a week and only have the population to support two or three. We now have a space that's paying rent, but the opportunity on a Friday and Saturday night to create a larger, more high-scale dining experience that's exclusive to that room and a certain set of seats that wouldn't support a full-time restaurant. So with a mixture of catering, observing the, you know, 18-hour opportunity inside Ruby June, as well as lunch, dinner, beverage inside Stockman's, and the opportunity to do brunch there on the weekends, that has driven that higher-than-average number.
Thank you very much.
Another question is, recently, the city has offered to support some other businesses, restaurant businesses. And this one probably might address the market saturation. At what point do, as the city's investment, at what point do we start saying, okay, we're going to have to look at these things a little bit closer? And I imagine Anthony would probably be the one to answer this one. And what is market?
I can definitely speak to that for you, Ed, if you'd like. I think it's really important to remember that we're not just servicing the customers and the folks that are in Montrose today, but we're also looking to the future. And we've got 100, well, 90 hotel rooms about to open up in the Marriott. We've also got the rooms that'll open up downtown in the Rathbone. Not only are we going to have those two hotels, we do have other projects in the pipeline that will bring additional people to town that we're still in discussions with and looking at. So we're not just building for today, we're building for the future as well, and we need to prepare for that, because if we don't have the establishments in place, we're not going to have the infrastructure to support the people coming into the community, looking for dinner, dessert, cafes, you know, the things that we're speaking to today. And I think that's a big concern. Right now, if you want to go to the Stone House, you need to make a reservation nearly any night of the week. If you want to go to the Camp Robber, I mean, it's packed all the time. There's a wait. You know, same with Trattoria de Sofia. I think a number of our members of the community are looking for additional options, looking for the availability to be there. And we have to have it there in order for folks to be able to come out and participate and make the purchases. And I think, actually, the folks spoke to it just a minute ago, there is a window that we don't even service. We're not servicing folks early in the morning, and we're not servicing folks late into the evening. If you want to get a dessert and a coffee after 8:00 in Montrose, tell me where you're going to find that right now. So this creates, I think, an opportunity to stretch some of that sales tax later into the day. I don't know if that answers your question, Ed.
Yeah, I was just concerned with the fact that businesses like construction and restaurants have the highest failure rates in the state of Colorado, as well as in the United States. And I just wanted to make sure that the city's investment, almost a quarter of a million dollars with the help, is worth the effort for the community. And I just was a little concerned, and so that's why I was asking these questions. And I do know that, from talking to some of the other restaurant owners, they're having issues with employees, getting the employees. And then I know that we had supported a restaurant, a culinary school here in Montrose, and as of yet, that hasn't come to fruition. And so I was just curious as to how some of this stuff was all going to play to provide the community, not only with the restaurants and services that they need, but also with the employees for the restaurants, so that they are successful. I don't want to take and invest a bunch of money in a business, and then three years later it closes down, and another one moves in and it keeps closing down. I know that recently, across the street from that restaurant, they had another restaurant that closed its doors, and it was picked up by another restaurant. So I don't know if the city made any investment in that one as of yet.
I think that's a great segue. Can I stop you? Because I feel like you've had the mic for a while.
Well, I do. I would have one more question. And that question is probably for the staff, is do we have a current list of the ones that we helped, as well as the contributions we made, and if they're still in business, and how are they doing? I think that with the investments that we made, since I've been on council, that's a substantial amount of money. And I think, not only myself, but I think the community would be interested in finding out that information. Thank you.
Well, I think, Ed, I can answer a piece of that. Only two of the, we've only supported two restaurants that are currently open. That is Trattoria de Sofia and Pomona, both of which, you know, Trattoria de Sofia has actually almost tripled their workforce and is doing excellent. Pomona, I spoke to him the other day, and he's done as much revenue in 10 months as he expected to do in a first year. And he's doing very, very well. And he said that the kitchen has totally supported his business in a, that he couldn't even have imagined back then. The other restaurants are still in the construction phases and have not yet been implemented. So we have Toasty, which hasn't started yet. We have the one we just approved recently near Demerit Square. And then we have this one here that's before us. So the other one, the other eatery, is currently on hold due to the space issue, so that may or may not happen. And that's a conversation we can have offline or in a different meeting. But right now, anyone that we have worked with is doing very, very well, with no issues or concerns. And I think, Ed, one also very important here is that do you have, the kitchen equipment staying with the building is imperative.
Yeah, can I talk about that?
Because that means that a new kitchen come in. And I'll pass it over to you, Mayor.
Yeah, that's the part I wanted to talk about, is that we are not investing in the business as much, in my opinion, as we are investing in the infrastructure of the city to have businesses. So when I hear from constituents, they want to see more restaurant choices. They want to see a different kind of restaurant than fast food. And I am really excited and think that our kitchen grant program is exactly addressing that need, because we are not in the business, as a city, of opening up and operating restaurants, with the exception of the golf course. But when a private developer, restaurateur, with extensive knowledge and background in the industry, is willing to make a substantial investment in our community, and the city can be part of that and be a catalyst for making that happen, I'm really excited about it. And I think it meets not only the quality-of-life questions that people are bringing to me, but also is a good return on investment, because our city revenue is driven by sales tax and by excess tax. And restaurants do an excellent job of bringing that into our community. And I think our kitchen grant program has been a huge success. Like you said, Mr. Russo, we only have two that are open, because we haven't been doing it that long, and they have both been very successful. I'm really proud of them. And I am fully supportive of the city continuing to make kitchen grant investments to bring, for all those reasons that I just gave. It doesn't mean we'll be doing it forever. There may be a point at which we have a nice saturation downtown of restaurants that are meeting the need, but we're not anywhere close to that right now, and I'm fully supportive.
May I add something?
Yeah, please.
I also think, to come in behind you, I likewise support this program wholeheartedly. And I think by the time it reaches the council, and it's brought to us, this application being a prime example, the last one we looked at, another example of how thorough and detailed these applications are. It's not like staff threw something together, brought it to us, and said, this looks like a really good idea, let's throw some money at this. There's been a lot of staff time involved in looking at these, analyzing the data. And by the time it gets to us as council, I feel comfortable that we're relying on the experts who have put this together, bringing it to us, or they wouldn't bring it to us if they didn't think it was a good investment in our community. I don't think it's my job, as a city councilperson, to look behind it. I'm not the expert. I'm relying on staff to tell us that this is a good investment. And I think staff is well-trained to do that, and I have all the confidence in the world that when we see something like we're seeing today, that it has had 110% effort in laying it out for us to make an ultimate decision as to whether or not to do it. And I, again, say it, I don't think we should be looking behind the curtain, so to speak, but to move forward with staff recommendations.
Any other council comments or questions? Mr. Russo, anything else you think council needs to consider prior to the next meeting?
Yeah, I think it's important to note that the tax generation, based on what they provided us, is, you know, over a five-year period, more than double what they're requesting today. And so even if they were to do half the revenue, they still would be paying us back within that five years through that tax revenue. And I think that's really important, because it's, you know, we can take into consideration that this has a value there.
Thank you very much. Anything else you want to say?
I'll just add to that, that I know the restaurants are definitely a, you know, volatile business. But with Ben's experience and myself and my mom's experience, you know, we've had DeVito's 15 years, we've had Pogre's 10. So we've had an idea of what it takes to deal with the staffing issues of the local community and stuff. And there is a lot of just grinding it out and a lot of hours. And I think Ben and Joe are definitely in the same boat and have the same restaurant experience with dealing with that. So I think that, you know, there's always that what-if. What if it doesn't work? But I would say the odds are definitely better in our favor for success, so.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming before us.
Thank you. One quick thing. I would like to see the corrected five-year revenue projection before we see it come to council, because right now, that inaccuracy in the numbers, where it's subtracting bar sales instead of adding that, that's going to skew the numbers a little bit. And I would like to see just a little more accurate representation of that before we vote on it.
Yeah, I just ran the numbers. So the total paid at the bottom, instead of the 529, will be $670,541.16. And we'll update that. It looks like there was an error of subtracting instead of adding, so it'll be more like $671,000.
Can we go back and make that correction to the published packet? Is that possible to do? So if anyone digs up the packet in the future, they want to see the information that we had this morning, we can reflect that? Because it seems like kind of important. That'd be great. Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. So now we'll go backwards in our agenda to what was Item C, which is Land Development Code Update Status. And we're going to hear from our Community Development Director, Jace Hackwell. I am not kidding when I say I'm so excited about this. It's just, yeah, well, I won't steal your thunder. It's pretty exciting stuff. I'll turn it over to Jace.
Perfect. Good morning, counsel. If you wonder why I'm standing and pacing, it's not because I have crazy anxiety, it's because I pulled my back out on Friday. So just trying to kind of roll with the punches here. I'm going to share my screen. We've got our consultant team on the line as well, so give me just a quick second here. Well, good morning once again, counsel. This is a kind of exciting time and a large-scale project we've got going. Really, I just wanted to provide an update for the Land Development Code. This was talked about back in October and November of last year. Also joining us on this call is Martin Landers and Jerry Dahl. I'll let them introduce themselves here in a second. But given the number of items on the agenda today, I'm really going to try to stick with a time threshold. I'm going to set my timer and kind of try to keep things moving along as we go. The real goal of today's work session is to go through some of the proposals and to really get some final direction as we move forward with some of these red lines. So Martin and Jerry, can you hear us okay? And do you want to go ahead and just introduce yourself real quick?
Sure, yeah. I can hear you great, Jace. I'm Martin Landers with Plan Tools, which is a community planning firm based in Loveland. And we've been working with staff on updates to the city's land development regulations, currently focusing on housing issues and specifically reducing barriers to housing development. Jerry?
I'm Jerry Dahl. I'm with a small land use and local government firm in Lakewood. We only represent cities and some other local governments. And I specialize in land use. I've worked with Martin for many years and have been pleased to be on the team for Montrose for some time now.
Thanks, Martin. Thanks, Jerry. I'll just jump in to the proposals moving forward. So as discussed at the council retreat back in October, there was support for expansion of the redo. So that's the first slide I'm really going to cover. Really, the first two slides are about the redo district. The redo district, just for some background, was designed to encourage residential development and redevelopment of existing properties, really in the core downtown area. This overlay district allows reduced dimensional standards and a larger variety of housing types than the underlying zoning. It also incentivizes ADUs or accessory dwelling units, which I'll jump into more in the future slides. And it offers those ADUs reduced water and sewer tap fees, which is a very large incentive to really push ADUs in the downtown area. I'll show the next slide, well, I'll get to the next slide in a bit, and that shows the map. That map is also in the packet, just from an expanded boundary standpoint. But two of the items I wanted to outline are on this slide as well, as far as changes to the redo district. That includes minimum lot sizes, and really minimum lot sizes for properties that can allow for ADUs. So minimum lot sizes right now are, in the redo district, are 2,075 square feet, but ADUs are only allowed if a lot is 6,250 square feet. That 6,250 number is the standard size of two combined city lots in the original township plat. Staff is proposing to actually reduce that 6,250 number to 3,125 square feet. There's several cases in the downtown area where there's narrowed block lengths, narrowed lot depths. And this has really kind of created a lot of issues where we have lots actually smaller than 6,250 square feet. A lot of lots that kind of range between the 5,500 square feet and 6,200 square foot threshold, which right now wouldn't accommodate ADUs, but they could be subdivided. So it's kind of this strange phenomenon we deal with in the downtown area. The proposed size reduction, again, would accommodate ADUs in the redo district, and it would encourage ADUs over subdivisions in some cases. And that would actually help alleviate some access issues that exist with really small lot subdivisions that we've seen in the downtown area. I'll mention just a quick stat. So with the newly proposed redo boundary, which I'll show on the next slide, there would be 293 parcels between 3,125 or 3,125 square feet and 6,250 square feet. What that means really is that there's 293 parcels that could accommodate, more parcels that could accommodate an ADU if we were to reduce that lot size threshold down. In addition, I want to just touch on setbacks. So setbacks for ADUs are proposed to be five feet for the front, rear, and side yards in the redo district. Currently, there's actually zero-foot setback for side and rear yards in the redo district for ADUs. This has actually been somewhat problematic, particularly along alleys. It's created some encroachment issues, and really just having a unified five-foot across the board seems like the safest, most logical solution. With that, I'll look to Martin and Jerry to maybe add anything additional, and I'm happy to maybe open it up for just a quick Q and A, if you all have anything.
Jason, I might just mention, emphasize perhaps, that we really view this as a positive change in regard to reducing two barriers to affordable housing development in the form of ADUs, both cost and dimensional standards. There's a much greater potential for ADU development in the downtown core, especially with the boundary expansion, given the reduced tap fee incentives. There's no minimum or maximum. There's no minimum or maximum size restrictions. There's no limitation on subdivision. Plus, we're talking about the change to minimum lot size requirements. So again, view this as a very positive change for reducing those barriers to housing development.
Jason, I have a question. I notice on page four of the document, you're talking about the benefit of ADUs. And I've been pushing for ADU expansion for four years, so I'm really excited to see this. But the one thing I would like to ask for clarification on is when you mentioned that ADUs are currently allowed throughout the city through an administrative plan development application. And allowing ADUs as a use by right in all zones, are you talking about a use by right in the redo district or citywide?
It's a great question, and I'll actually get to that in probably slide number five. So I think jumping ahead, great question that I'll cover though.
And you may be getting to this also, so I'll defer to you. But if not, can you speak to how the proposed legislation that's pending before the General Assembly might impact what we're trying to do?
Another great topic, and I will be touching on that as well.
Okay, I'll make a comment directly related to the five-foot thing then. Because that's, our tour that we took of some existing ADUs was really helpful because I can picture in my head that one ADU is very nice. It was on an alley, but it had zero setback. And I can see now that, through that show and tell process, why that is problematic. And so that five-foot setback makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just jump into the boundary.
Keep your own tummy.
Excuse me, the boundary of the redo district as proposed. So what this slide shows, and I know it's kind of tough to see because you don't have it on the screens directly in front of you, but this is the redo district boundary map in the sense that the orange, kind of that initial central layer, is the original redo district boundary that was approved back in 2008. The boundary primarily encompasses, again, the original town plat of Montrose, much of which was developed prior to the 1950s. The redo boundary was expanded, and you can see that in the yellow portion on the screen here. And that was expanded in 2017 to include more property to the southwest and to the east of the original town plat. Again, this kind of area was built out primarily in the 1960s and a little in the early 70s. And the new boundary, which is shown in green here on the slide, is what the proposed expansion area is. This includes some 70s-built subdivisions like Country Club Acres and English Gardens. It also includes some newer subdivisions further to the southeast and really that southeastern quadrant, southeastern square there. Some kind of old English gardens, but there's also some 80s to 90s-built subdivisions down there, including Heatherwood and Monarch Gardens. Really, as far as the expansion goes and why that portion was included, is just to kind of have a natural break in terms of some distinctive features. So you have the Lutzenheiser Canal there to the east, which would kind of be that natural break for this. And then Hillcrest is kind of the natural break as you move further to the north. You've got the city golf course there directly to the east of Hillcrest. Obviously, didn't feel the need or obligation to include that, but Hillcrest is kind of being that natural break for the most part. So I just wanted to reflect this and really actually get some feedback from council as is this appropriate? Is the kind of southeastern quadrant appropriate to include in this redo district? In your eyes, just have a little bit of general discussion here. And again, the redo district, as I see it, the incentive here, the big incentive is those reduced fees. So really encouraging and incentivizing ADU development. And in the next slide, I'll actually get into the kind of more nitty-gritty of ADUs throughout the city.
I like it. I think it reflects what council said we wanted to see, which was, we wanted to see the ADU, the redo district expanded, but not to the whole city. But we wanted it expanded a little. And so I feel like it reflects, I'm seeing nodding from my fellow city councilors. I'll ask them to go on the record with like a verbal comment to that.
Yeah, I like it. I think that it really does reflect exactly what we had directed staff to look at, and it reflects the realities of more current subdivisions that are going to be able to expand and develop ADUs. It doesn't cover the brand-new subdivisions which have yet to prove their viability. So I really do think it's very well done.
Thank you. All right, I'll take that as a green light, and we'll just jump to the next slide. And this is likely the slide that'll have the most discussion, or really the next two slides, I should say. So we currently don't have great definition for ADUs. There is one that is somewhat defined in our redo district overlay in that code section. But what we've proposed is the definition shown on the screen. It's pretty standard, and I'll just, I won't read it verbatim, but I'll just kind of reflect what it refers to. It refers to the fact that ADUs may be attached to a primary dwelling unit. They may, thought that might have been my timer. Sorry. Attached, they may be attached to the primary dwelling unit. They may be located in a detached unit, or they may be located in a detached unit, essentially like a detached garage in an upper level. There'd only be one ADU allowed per lot, and mobile homes, manufactured homes, park models, and travel homes would not be allowed to be considered as ADUs. Modular homes, which I'll get into actually a little bit later in the slides, as well as stick-built homes, would be allowed to be ADUs. The illustration on the right here, and again, I recognize, given kind of the meeting we've got going, this is a little tough to see, but it just depicts exactly kind of what I refer to on the front end. So what that top slide shows, or the top illustration shows, is the fact that an ADU can actually be kind of a basement unit, or it could be an upper-level unit. Again, it would have to have its own standard, or its own separate entry. The second illustration is what really refers to as an attached ADU in the sense of being an addition that has its own separate entry point that's attached to the primary dwelling. And then lastly, is the standard detached accessory dwelling unit that is really primarily what we see today. We don't see a whole lot of attached, and that's because our code's a little vague on it, frankly. And I think we're looking to fix that moving forward as well with the definition proposed here. So I'll look to maybe Martin and Jerry if there's anything more to add specific to this piece. I know we'll talk about much more on the next slide, but feel free to add if you have anything.
I guess I would just note again, this again is a positive change, especially in regard to removing another barrier to this type of development, which is removing a limitation on the types of ADUs that can be built. This definition is from a model land use code, and it provides a greater breadth of opportunity for ADU development while still maintaining the character of predominantly single-family neighborhoods. I would also note that these images show three types. There's actually a fourth type, and that is with a detached garage with an upper level or even attached ADU to that detached garage. So there's a lot of different variations that can occur by using a definition of this type.
And I think that accurately reflects council's direction when we met prior for that work session where we said, yes, we think all these different kinds of structures should be considered as ADUs. And I'd like my fellow councilors to weigh in or agree for the record.
Yeah, I think it goes the direction we were looking. The one question, I think I saw it somewhere on utility services. If it's attached or part of the existing house, I'm assuming we don't have any additional utility connections. But if it was detached, we would have.
It's a great "it depends" answer, I think. Yeah, I think in theory, you could have a detached that has a separate taps completely. I think the thought is, if you're not going to subdivide, you don't necessarily need separate taps. So it's kind of a case-by-case basis, as I would see it. And that's something that we'll flesh out further as we continue to move down this path. But I think spot-on, something that we've taken into consideration, so.
So if the unit is attached to the current water tap and so on, they would not be able to subdivide without getting a separate tap and separate utilities?
That is correct, yep. And that's what we would reflect in the process as far as an approval letter or anything like that goes.
Any other questions about the different kinds of ADUs we're looking at allowing under new land use?
Yeah, is there any, ma'am, is there any possibility of maybe getting that drawing as well as the definition on our?
Your packet.
Packet? Yeah. Because I'm looking here and I'm going, where is that at?
So we're saying we'd want a copy of the slides to look at during this whole process?
Absolutely. Yep, I'm happy to provide that. So I'll move into this next slide, specific to ADUs. This is probably the slide that will occupy the most time in terms of questions and some back and forth. Really, how I've structured the next few slides is just kind of had a bulleted list. And it more or less gives us the green light, us, the staff, and the consultant team, the green light to proceed with said changes or to just ax them completely. Nothing really overly different compared to what was presented, again, back in October, but I'll go through these a little more specifically. One thing I did want to mention is that ADUs are currently allowed throughout the city right now. They're allowed through the administrative plan development process. It is an administrative process, but it is a bit burdensome. And one of the things I'll get into later is really looking at kind of changing that up. But the first item I want to look at from just adding some parameters to ADUs that would be outside the redo district, is having some specific size thresholds here. So ADUs outside the redo district must be between 200 square feet and 1,000 square feet and be subordinate to the primary structure. ADUs within the redo would be exempt. They are currently exempt from those standards and would continue to be. But that adds some kind of specific parameter in terms of size and keeps it reasonable in the sense of being subordinate to that principal or primary structure. And I'm starting with kind of these first three, and then I'll jump into the allowed as a use by right at the very end. But I kind of want to just gauge 200 to 1,000, does that seem like a fair size threshold?
200 seems awful small to me.
It does. And I think, in theory, you could have all the things that would be needed for a dwelling unit. I believe Archie told me it was about 120 square feet. 200 is a little bit small. If you were wanting to raise that, I don't, I see no issue in doing that. 200 is quite small. Even tiny homes are generally above that.
Do you know, based on the ones that we saw on our field trip, what those were? Because like, either the one off of South Fifth or the one on like North First, or any, so I can picture?
I believe everything we've approved is between 600 and 900 square feet.
Okay.
From any, and that is the very typical threshold for size. Because that can accommodate two-bedroom unit, a one-bedroom unit, generally maybe a loft added to that. But that is generally the size threshold that we look at.
Sure.
And, excuse me, something we could do for the future, if you wanted more information? I just did a quick Google, and there are some seemingly great videos of tours of 200-square-foot tiny homes and apartments. And maybe we could show some of those sometime or send out examples just to look at as we narrow these in.
Sure. I guess I'm wondering if that isn't something that we can just let the market dictate? I mean, if someone wanted to build a 200-square-foot ADU, you know, it would be up to them to decide if that's, if people wanted to rent something like that. But perhaps if you were building it simply for your mother and simply for your mother-in-law to live there, and she was going to mainly eat all of her meals with the family and spend time in the house, but you wanted her to have her own unit, that might be more than sufficient. And so maybe government doesn't need to regulate that as much. It's not for us to say if 200 is enough. If that can meet the sleeping, bathroom, and kitchen, then maybe we should not be over-regulating that.
I would agree with Mayor Bynum. I think that as long as it meets the minimum requirements for AGRIS safety, fire safety, sanitation, health, and welfare, I personally could not imagine myself living in a 200-square-foot unit. But that's just personal preference. There are people who do like that kind of closeness, and I would agree. I think that that, leaving it at 200 to 1,000, to me, makes good sense because the market will decide that.
And I agree with you, David. But I just would reiterate the concern that you did raise, and that is, is there a downside to allowing them from a regulatory standpoint or otherwise of allowing a unit that small?
And I don't, I don't know that I have a direct answer here. I think, at the end of the day, Mayor Bynum had a good quote there of, the market generally dictates it. And you don't see, I've never seen a 200-square-foot. They exist, I know that for a fact. But it is rare, and generally, the market kind of dictates that 600 to 900 square foot threshold. But at the end of the day, I would look to council for kind of final direction. If 200 seems appropriate, or if it'd be worth looking at maybe bumping that up a little bit, we're happy to look at that, to see, really dive into more of what 200 feet looks like, and we could provide that information to you as well.
I would support it, as long as you can, as long as you feel comfortable telling us that we're not making a mistake by allowing them to be that small from some kind of a health, safety, welfare standpoint.
I would not, I would not think it's a problem. I talked with Archie in our building department about this, and I think in theory, it could actually fit in smaller. Setbacks will still have to be met. Life safety requirements will still have to all be met. So I think that's the key, key piece here. And yeah, happy to move forward with it, proposed as is.
Yeah, I've known people to live in, here in Montrose, in units that were 200 square feet, perhaps even smaller, and they were quite comfortable with it. A bed, a small little kitchen. During that time, they used cold stoves, so that occupied some of the room. And as a young person growing up here in town, I felt comfortable myself just being in that situation with my grandfather and my grandmother in a small unit like that. So I think 200 would be the minimum, though. Because according to some, like she was saying, small home designs, that is the requirements for a bathroom and a shower and some of the other things that would be necessary to one or two persons to live in.
Well, I have a little bit of concern with the 200-square-foot. I think that's awfully small, and my biggest concern is what happens down the road in the future, because people tend to overuse small spaces and we become a junk dealership before long. So I think that that's, personally, I'd like to see that up a little bit.
So Ed, you're a contractor. Do you, from a, from a code standpoint, do you see any compliance issues with 200 feet?
I don't, you know, you'd have to have a minimum size windows for firegress. And of course, if you have a door, the door has to meet the requirements. The other thing is that 200-square-foot might be more affordable for a single individual person, a young person, just going out on their own. Again, like I said, my grandfather's, a couple of them lived in homes that were quite small, 200 square feet, and they were quite comfortable.
I think another way to look at it is, let's look at the lot size and stuff. I'd hate to say, oh, we're going to allow ADUs here, and then be like, oh, but you can't actually build one because the ADU has to be bigger than your lot can accommodate. So it is, there's two different issues. It's how big the inside of the ADU is, but also its footprint. And to allow them means to allow them and make it feasible to build them, and not just say, oh, they're allowed, but you actually can't fit one.
And it's a good point, and I think we'll move to the next topic here in just a second. But I think from a 200-square-foot standpoint, what you'll likely see more of is the attached and internal ADUs. So the basement ADU, the attached addition. Unlikely, just due to law of diminishing returns really, that you would see a detached structure that's going to accommodate all the utility connections for 200 square feet. Just more or less cost prohibitive, as I would see it. But I think based on the discussion, to continue with the 200-square-feet, if more discussions to be had, maybe it can be at the red line stage. Is that appropriate? Great.
Would that be a reasonable thing to look at, is if we're going to go with that small amount, is make that, that it has to be an attached unit?
I don't want to make it that restrictive, because one of the, one of the goals of this is to achieve affordable housing for people who cannot afford to build an entire three-bedroom house. And I think by putting that restriction on there, that also limits people. As Mayor Bynum was mentioning, that we want to encourage... As Mayor Bynum was mentioning, that we want to encourage people to be able to create these units, and by limiting to only being an attached unit, I think would kind of go contrary to our vision.
No, I think we should keep moving on. I think we've kind of, you've heard from all of us on that.
I'm at 25 minutes. So actually, the next two I'm going to go through very quickly. These are reflecting that ADUs outside the redo district shall not be subdivided or converted into a condominium unit, that would be able to be separately conveyed. So the redo district now would allow for subdivision, as long as minimum lot sizes are met. What this would reflect is that ADUs outside of the redo district could not be subdivided. And the intent there is, kind of, there's a number of reasons, really, is to really keep the intent of the neighborhood intact. You don't have multiple access points, new driveways that you're creating. Really, more lots than what the original subdivision was accommodating for. You're allowing for additional infill density with the ADUs, but not just subdividing to have separate ownership throughout, which will, from what we believe, kind of keep that integrity of the neighborhood. Martin Duzette, did you want to add anything specific to that? Or Jerry?
Yeah, I think maybe the only thing else to add to that is, if you have any concerns about, you know, these ADUs, again, for affordable housing, for the idea of workforce housing, that's fantastic. One thing that happens if you do allow for subdivision, is that potentially it could be snapped up for short-term rentals. And that creates a whole new set of problems, perhaps. So I think it is good public policy to limit these, to not be subdivided in areas outside of the redo district. Redo district is an incentive-based area, and of course, there's a lot of good reasons to allow for things that you typically may not allow in other areas of the community. But in general, it's a good idea not to allow for subdivision of these, if your intent is to try to encourage more workforce housing.
Makes sense.
Perfect. Thanks, Martin. The next one is just requiring one-off street parking space for any ADUs. This is a current standard within our redo district that would be carried over to outside the redo district. So hopefully, that's a definite head nod there, is to require that. On-street parking would not accommodate for that. Outside of the B1 zone district, which is the central core district that is confined to the redo district regardless. So I don't think worthy of spending much time there. The last bullet point, I think, is the biggest, and it'll hit kind of some of the things that have already been captured. So really, the proposal here is to allow in all zone districts that allow for single-family ADUs. This would be a use-by-right, and it actually wouldn't be that dramatic of a change, as I mentioned earlier, from what's currently allowed. Again, that administrative plan development process would allow for ADUs outside the redo district, but if we were to allow it as a use-by-right and have a more simplified review process, that's what would be proposed. What we have talked about, thrown out the idea on, is a minor site development review process. This is an administrative process that would be fairly expedited. Site plan reviews go through, commercial developments go through site plan and site developments. And so we'd be looking for things like utility connections, parking, making sure setbacks and lot sizes are appropriate. But a more expedited review than the current administrative plan development process. One thing to mention, too, on this, is that by allowing ADUs as a use-by-right, we would not limit the HOA powers that could be played. Really, HOAs could absolutely decide that they do not want ADUs, and that is, they could amend their CCNRs to reflect that. And we would not really overpower that situation. This could actually strengthen some HOAs that exist within the city, as I see it. Really trying to become stronger from an oversight standpoint and enforcement standpoint when HOA issues arise. So that could be a kind of a possibility that plays out. And then one other thing I want to mention, and I think Mayor Pro Tem Reed indicated, or alluded to it, is that a recent House bill was just proposed, it's referred to as HB24-1152. This bill would require that a majority of jurisdictions over a population of 1,000 people, which would include Montrose, allow for ADUs as a use-by-right in all single-family zones. Beyond that, it would prohibit jurisdictions from maintaining parking requirements and design and dimensional standards. So what I just went through, as far as those three bullet points, those actually wouldn't apply based on the bill that the state's proposing.
Jason, it's my understanding that the bill, the way that the bill is currently written, is that one of the limitations is for a metropolitan planning unit?
Yep.
Or a metropolitan planning area?
Mm-hmm.
And do we qualify for that?
We do, we do. And so we would be categorized in that, in that realm, so that would, that would, again, apply to us, and most jurisdictions, really, across the state.
Was there some exemption in there for home-rule cities?
There is not, no. So--
Not anyhow, Jase. And I think it's probably, you know, mine, it's probably appropriate to say it's useful to get out ahead of potential legislation, but as everybody in the room knows, bills really evolve over the time in the legislature, as they go through committees in the House. We had that experience, of course, with Senate Bill, what, 213, last time around. I do think that the, this proposed new bill with, just on ADUs, probably has a greater chance of success, because I think perhaps the governor learned that you can't put everything in a single bill, and so they're going for individual topics now. But nevertheless, it's early in the legislative session, and a lot can change. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's useful to be in the game and potentially ahead of legislation. I wouldn't alter the local legislation here too much to worry about what the current state of that bill is, because it will, it'll change. It's nice to be ahead of it on a broad policy level. And that leads me to the other point I would want to make, which is, in terms of state policy, ADUs as a use-by-right is really one of the key factors in obtaining grant funds from DOLA that have been available, and we worked on, and are being used here in part. And so that's one of the key things that DOLA looks at right away, because it's such low-hanging fruit in terms of encouraging and advancing affordable housing. So there are two good reasons to be doing, those are two solid reasons to be doing what is on this slide.
And I'll add, since I sit on the CML executive board, that our recommendation to CML staff, and they took it, was, well, I guess it wasn't a recommendation, we vote. CML is opposing unless the bill is amended. And what CML usually means by that, instead of just opposing it, is we want our lobbyists to be at the table, working with legislators to make this bill work for cities. And so the amended would probably be, a lot of cities are allowed to opt in, but the state can't mandate what cities have to do. So CML's position is oppose unless amended.
It's more of a local control issue.
It is very much a local control issue.
I think it's good to point out that our governor was trying to push for the state to take over all zoning, and I look at this as just a backdoor method for him to participate in it.
Yeah, they've broken it down, and again, CML will continue to push back on the state on those issues, so that we retain local control to make these decisions at our local level.
And that's the goal, I think, as that bill just really came out, is, we're jumping out ahead of it, but we're also requiring some specific standards that, as stated in the bill now, wouldn't apply. But knowing that this will really probably, if it doesn't pass, it will continue to be presented in some form or fashion in the future years, knowing that, just getting out ahead of it. And I think, Martin, did you have anything to add? I know Jerry touched on it, but specific to grant funding or other kind of benefits, as you see them?
No, I would just reiterate what Jerry said. You know, this, this issue of ADUs is something that has come before a number of grant applications. It's one of several qualifying strategies that DOLA considers when they're reviewing applications for various types of affordable housing, planning, and development grants. And in particular, the grant that helps fund this project is one from the HB, I think it's 211271, Grant Planning Process. And because of the city's ongoing work in trying to address housing issues, the grant for this project was approved. But it competes with other communities, and these grants are getting more and more competitive. And now with, now we've got the Proposition 123 funding coming out, anything that communities can do to reduce barriers to housing development within their codes, and like Jerry said, this is kind of low-hanging fruit with ADUs. We've got another, a number of other proposals that you'll see in front of you as well, but all of these things give the city a much better chance to be competitive with any type of a housing grant that you go forward with in the future.
So I guess the question I'll ask is, is this, is council giving direction on this, or want to see more? Okay, great.
So we're seeing some thumbs up from council members. Are we, as council, I know this whole process is going to take the bulk of 2024. So you're taking this whole land development code updates, and you're breaking it down. And so today's discussion was just the ADU part of a bigger picture, correct? Are we going to, so my question is, are we going to vote on this specific piece, or are you going to take all of these little work sessions and roll it into one giant vote on a land use code update?
The plan, as proposed now, is to have a, kind of a large-scale red line. So we're separating it into two phases. Phase 2A, which refers to really the housing-oriented changes, because we have a grant that would actually supplement the funding for that, and the consultant fees. And then Phase 2B would be non-housing related. So really, everything outlined within this presentation, within the staff report, reflects the direction we want. We'd bring all those in front at the same time, not split them out and have separate meetings and separate hearings. It would just simplify the process overall, as we see it.
Okay. And there will be opportunity beyond just public comment at a council meeting for community input into these updates? I mean, we had really great turnout when we told the community we wanted to just start talking about ADUs. Are we going to go back with, hey, this is what we were thinking, and see what the community thinks?
We will, yeah. I mean, a lot of community feedback and community engagement took place with the comprehensive plan, and one of them, you know, and which was recently adopted, or rather recently adopted. So we don't want to reinvent the wheel, in the sense of going back to the drawing board with a lot of, you know, community engagement, because we did hear a lot of input on that specifically. But yes, knowing some of these topics are fairly sizable changes, having some more educational sessions as to specifically what is being proposed is what we will be providing. So in short, I don't see it as robust as the comprehensive planning process, but there will be engagement and education that goes with it.
Sure. I just, I remember, just, I don't want to belabor the point of the parking, like, it's a detail, but I think some of the folks in our community who want to develop ADUs might prefer there not be an off-street parking requirement. And is that going to be, are we going to hear from them and talk about that more, or based on the head nods today, like, that's what we'll vote on?
I think, based on the head nods today, we'll go, move forward with red lines. With those red lines, we can actually present them to the community prior to them coming for a vote, and then we could understand where the community stands on some of these changes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions about this land development code update discussion on today's agenda?
So there is, there is a couple more, and I know--
Oh, I'm sorry.
--we've already run out of time, and a lot of these are actually, hopefully, quick, and I will not go through the ones that might require a little time. So I'll just go through these again, kind of, not rapid-fire, a lot of these were already touched on, but just to make sure that we do have the head nod, so we can move forward with the red lines. The first is to allow modular housing in all residential districts. Right now, they're only allowed in the R5 and R6. Manufactured is different than modular. Manufactured would still be confined to the R5 and the R6 districts. So seeing head nods, I know this was a general head nod last time, so I'm just going to check it.
Yeah.
The next, the next one is the elimination of the plan development requirement for multifamily proposals that have more than one structure. So within the R3A and the R4 districts, multifamily proposals have been proposed, but they have to go through this laborious plan development and hearing process, even as uses by right. What this would do is remove that requirement, essentially. So they would still be uses by right, they would go through the site development process, they would be thoroughly reviewed, they just wouldn't go through that four-to-five-month plan development process. Going to check that one. Adding definitions for middle-density housing, so triplexes and townhomes specifically. Those aren't called out in our current code, so we would add those to our code, and actually allow those, or look to allow those as a use-by-right in the R3A and the R4, which they already are, more or less, through multifamily, but also allowing those as a use-by-right in the R3 medium-density zone. Again, kind of captures that missing middle, and we see that that's a good fit. Good head nods there, I like it, okay. I'm not going to go through with the consolidation of zone districts, that's probably worth a bigger discussion, so I'll just cut to the next slide. Maximum height in the high-density districts, R4 and R3A, we talked about this last time, to push that from 30, 35 feet to 40 feet, and that would accommodate additional architectural styles for roof structures, really, so we don't have all multifamily properties with the same exact roof situation, really looking fairly similar across the board. I'm not seeing any opposition, so I'm going to check that. The next one is to allow slightly higher density in the highest-density zone districts. Our R4 zone district is our high-density district, and allows for about 19 units per acre now. Typically, what we hear from developers is the break-even point for high-density is actually about 24 units an acre. 24 is the standard, as I've seen it, for most jurisdictions, and so it'd be just bumping that R4 district from 19 units an acre to 24 units an acre. Setback reductions, specific to rear yard setbacks in the medium and high-density districts, and this would just accommodate larger building footprints. It could just accommodate for more density at the end of the day. We actually get a lot of feedback in kind of the medium-to-medium-high-density districts when it comes to single-family development, and this would reduce those setbacks from, really from 20 to 25 feet, down to 20 to 15 feet, as expressed in the staff report, and as expressed, really, here on the slide. No issues there. Lastly, is minimum density thresholds. Really, just looking at our highest-density zone district, our R4 zone district, which is generally in areas that has the most efficient infrastructure resources, having some minimum density there. And what that could look like is just eliminating single-family as a use-by-right in that highest-density district, or actually having a unit-per-acre threshold. The easy route would be eliminating single-family, frankly. The harder route, or maybe the route that would require more digging, is to figure out what minimum density that could actually look like.
Clarification, Jase, they could still build a single-family unit, but it would require a plan development process? Or if eliminated as a use-by-right?
It would basically eliminate the use-by-right option in the R4. So that could be changed to allow for it in, with a conditional use permit. We could actually modify it to have that as kind of the happy medium.
Or someone could come in and say they want to subdivide their lot, they want to build their single-family residence on the part next to other single-family, and develop the rest under the higher density. I mean, there's a lot of options, but I think it makes sense, because if we have things zoned under that higher density, we don't want someone to develop large, single-family residents there. It doesn't meet the goals of the infrastructure and transportation that's provided to that higher-density zoning.
Exactly. Those are the locations that, again, have that highest efficiency of infrastructure, where you really would want to see infill, and you wouldn't want to waste those parcels on large lot subdivisions. We can dig into that a little bit more. I know I've ran, ran through enough time here, so maybe that's something we can bring back, as well as the consolidation of zone districts. But this was great, I think this gives a lot of direction. Martin and Jerry, do you have anything to add, or do you want any points of clarity at this point? I think we've got some good things to run with here.
I don't have anything else to add. Thank you, Jason.
With that, I'll go ahead and just conclude. I won't go through the next steps here. Again, I know we're short on time, this is tough to see here anyways, but to the earlier point, we're looking at a, probably a six-to-nine month, well, probably a nine-month process to actually get the housing code amendments in front of you for changes. Again, we'll have some public input and some educational sessions as we go, and then, following that, we'll move forward with non-housing-related code updates to get-- And then following that, we'll move forward with non-housing related code updates to get in line with our comprehensive plan. But thanks for the time and sorry I went over. I expected that.
Thanks for good information and it, and it aligns really well with the discussions we had in October. So thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Martin and Jerry. Appreciate your all's time as well.
Yes, thanks for joining us. But Jase, keep standing there because next up is our 2023 development report. And this is also for you. Unless you want to take a break and sit down for a little while? Are you good to keep going?
I'm good. Let's just keep, keep with the momentum here, I would say. And I won't, so really what, what this item is, is an annual development recap for 2023. There's no action that's taken on this item. I just really wanted to present the information that we've seen over the, the course of the last few years, last handful of years to give you a sense of the trends that we're seeing. We're not really making projections here, but it's just good information to have. So hopefully you had a chance to read the, the actual report itself and it is in the packet, but I'll just go over this in hopefully 10 minutes or less. So this slide just shows planning applications. And what we see here was the highest, highest total was recognized in 2021. That just went right along with the pandemic as, as we saw it. And while it slowed down a little bit since then, we're still way above our pre-pandemic application numbers. So this chart shows annexations, major subdivisions, plan developments, site developments and redo projects. This does not include a number of other types of projects that we see daily like signs, encroachment permits, conditional use permits, historic designations. It just really shows the, the legwork that's been done, I think, from the, the planning staff over the course of the last few years. So it's a chance for me to give a lot of kudos to William Reese. I know he's not sitting here, but he needs, he needs some kudos for some of these numbers as well as former planner Amy Sharp. Really that 2021 number, that's, that is huge. And we kept things going in great fashion and really quick. So it's a really impressive staff that we have. I can't say that enough. From the annexation standpoint, I, I'm not going to belabor this, but this just reflects what I discussed a month ago at the three mile plan presentation. Really what it shows in my eyes is that a lot of the annex area, well, there was really minimal annex area in 2023, but a lot of the developed area actually took place in the city limits over the course of the last year to two years, which is encouraging. We're not seeing really the urban sprawl or the suburban sprawl. We're seeing a lot of infill projects. Residential subdivisions, this is where a ton of kudos goes to Scott Murphy and the, I think, the, the design and review component. So just to clarify kind of the process of subdivisions, and this is said at a lot of council meetings when we bring these forth, but there's a lot of phases that goes, that go into development, construction of subdivisions. This includes the initial conceptual design, final design of infrastructure, construction of said infrastructure, and then the plating of new lots. This is all, these are all precursors to a new single family construction or new residential construction in general. So upon a phase of, of infrastructure, basically that allows for construction. And then the developer can move into the final plat phase. But one thing to really mention, and this chart kind of shows it, is that preliminary plats can contain hundreds of lots and they can have a phasing schedule that's broken out over decades. And so really what we've seen over the course of the last couple of years is a lot of preliminary lots being approved. And it would be expected that these preliminary lots being approved will go through the final stages over the course of the next 10 to 20 years. So the number on that is actually, you know, seventeen preliminary plats over the last three years and fifteen hundred total lots. So that's not fifteen hundred lots hitting the market tomorrow. It's just something to clarify. That's fifteen hundred hitting over the course of the next 15 years likely. And that's a lot of what we saw in, really in the 2000s to 2010s is the 2000s, you saw a lot of preliminary subdivisions being approved. And in the 2010s, you saw a lot of final plats actually being platted. And that's what you see on the far left in the earlier years, 2018, 19, and 20. We didn't see any preliminary lots. That was actually the case for really throughout the 2010s as we saw a lot of final lots platted. So it's.
Hey, Jase, would you remind us, because I forgot, once you get preliminary plat approval, how long is that good far before you have to go in for final?
It's five years for final plating. And those, generally what you see over time is those are re-upped or just reviewed or slightly revised and modified. But yep, five years is that standard. This slide is building permits, specifically residential units that have been permitted. And so a lot of kudos to Archie and the building team on this one. You see the huge spike again in 2021 and that just coincides with the pandemic. It was somewhat flat up until about 2017 and then that surge you see that started in about the third quarter of 2020 came into play. So also something to note, we didn't, the orange on this slide reflects the multifamily. We didn't really see any multifamily up until about 2018 and even then it was pretty modest. Then we saw the base camp apartments come into play in 2021, residences at Dry Cedar Creek in 2023. Those are really what pushes the numbers up here as shown. One thing that we're really lacking is the duplex and townhome development. Still not, there's just still not a lot of it, quite frankly. And it's something that we're, we're looking at more of. We recognize that it's a product that's, that's wanted by the community. It's just a matter of working with builders and developers to see how it fits within their model. Just a quick slide here on tourism and the local economy. What this shows, and you've seen this kind of monthly from Shani, is we've seen a pretty sizable increase in our retail sales tax. That, that just coincides with, somewhat with the pandemic, somewhat with the growing population base. The, that chart on the right shows the enplanements at our airport. That coincides, I think, directly with retail sales tax. So you see those jump quite a bit and it looks like they, they just continue to keep going up. This reflects the econo, some general economic information. I think the staff report provides a good background on this, but what I show is the unemployment rates and really they're back to their pre-pandemic trends. Not quite to the lowest level. They sit at three percent for the county, 2.4% I believe was the lowest level back in mid to late 2019. But we're pretty darn close at that three percent compared to 2.4% then. And then also on the right, it just shows that income is actually going up, you know? The next slide will be telling it's not going up as much as home costs and other things, but it has gone up 25% since 2018. We're still below the state, the nation, and slightly below Mesa County, but we are seeing increases there. And this is probably the most eye-opening slide and really kind of paints the picture of housing costs as I see it. So what it shows is median home prices at 430,000 in 2023. This is, let's see, as I mentioned in 20, in, excuse me, in incomes, those have risen 25% since 2018. Home prices have risen 76% over that same timeframe. What's risen even faster is the mortgage payments. So what this shows is really over the last 18 months, they've skyrocketed. But the average monthly mortgage payment in 2020 with the 20% town payments, property taxes and other expenses not included, was just over a thousand dollars. That same average mortgage payment in 2023 was just over 2,200 dollars. So again, incomes go up 25%. Home prices go up 75%, but you have average mortgage payments going up well over 100%. And it just kind of paints that picture of affordability in general. And that really concludes it. I think I hit like right, maybe, maybe just over 10. I don't have predictions to give. That's not my job. It's like Dr. Perry at CMU. I just provide the data and it's interesting data and it's pretty eye-opening data. So hopefully you kind of can, can see the picture from an affordability standpoint. But one thing I'll mention is that we're still seeing a lot of activity. So major subdivision developments are still working themselves through the pipeline. Multifamily projects are under construction and we have a lot of interest in new projects. And commercial interest is, is a big one. It's still plentiful. We've got large and small businesses still wanting to relocate and build even under the current interest rate environment. So I don't see, I, I think we're positioned for a successful year in 2024 and moving forward, which is encouraging even with the, the kind of market issues that we're dealing with.
Jase, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Council, any questions that we need to address right now? Okay, like Jase said, this is an informational item and not something we're going to vote on, but certainly good information, I think, that provides overall information as we make a lot of our decisions on council. Okay, next up would be the CDBG grant application for the VOA Rendezvous Apartments. And Chris Ottinger is going to tell us more about this.
Morning, council. Pleased to present a grant application request from the Volunteers of America. So the applicant is not really here today. He had scheduling conflict, but he'd be happy to talk to you some more tomorrow at the regular council session. So the background to this is essentially VOA, as you may know, has a campus already in Montrose. They're looking to kind of retool, rebrand that campus. Some of it is senior house, senior focused, some of it is family focused right now for rentals. And so what they plan to do is take those families and turn them more into a senior focused, which is their bread and butter. They're asking us to apply for CDBG grant to help fund this project. We, the way is being set up is more of a, because as they were awarded, excuse me, 4% tax credits to build this out, what will happen is the CDBG grant will actually go to fund one of the entities that is purchasing it, one of the partnership entities. So what's going to happen is they're going to redo, oh, excuse me, 20, 30 units that they currently have, kind of rebuild those. They're over 25 years old now. They need to be rehabbed. And then they're going to add an extra 22 units onto the existing property next to that same building and make it more of a, a campus feeling for that. And then the total ask for the CDBG grant will be about $2,286,000 to the Division of Housing. And with your approval, we can go ahead and start that application process.
And we're basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, but on these CDBG grant applications, the city helps with the administration, but it's basically pass through. The city is eligible and so we are the applicant on their behalf. The money comes through us and goes to them. And the city's cost in all this is your time and our administrative cost to write checks and administer the grant.
Absolutely. This is a completely pass through relationship.
And this is what's great, I'll just kind of cap it off here. This is what's great about the CDBG program is that we can really be partners with a lot of community organizations in terms of being that pass through entity is that we're the one that would get it, but we work with them directly so they can achieve success with their projects.
And for clarification, the Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG, is, does not impact our budget. It does not, we are, we do not count this as income. We do not count this as an expense. We are, as Mayor Biden pointed out, merely a pass through.
It does show up on our budget though as an income and an expense.
It shows up, but we don't, we don't get that money.
Correct. It shows up as a revenue expense at all.
Yeah, they come out, come in, go out.
Okay. And we will be voting on this tomorrow night because of a timely, issue of timing?
Yes, yes. They would like to have this as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Any questions? If, if you do ask them tomorrow. No, we're good, I think, for today. Thank you. Okay. Vehicle and equipment disposal authorization, Public Works Director Jim Scheid.
Good morning, council. So this is a, one recommendation we do annually. This is for disposing of vehicles that are being replaced. So we've obviously budgeted for and then recently even recommended purchasing several new vehicles and equipment. This is kind of the follow-up to that, that as those are received, we would dispose of those vehicles being replaced. And as noted in the, in the memo, there are several ways that we dispose of those, primarily gov deals. That would be our main way that we would sell vehicles that are replaced. And again, as they're received, they are, after they're kind of vetted and checked out, make sure the new vehicle is operational, then the old vehicle would be then sold. And we are required to have council's approval for disposal of that property. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise this, in the past, has gone on our consent agenda at the council meeting, but it could be either way as your preference.
Are there any questions? I think it can go on a consent agenda. It's pretty straightforward. It's mostly, feels like housekeeping, you know? You need us to agree to do this, but we don't approve each one or particularly, we leave it up to your discretion whether you sell it on gov deals or donate it to another municipality.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item G, amendments to the contract for the sale of Historic City Hall. Yeah. Did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. I think I just saw Jim and thought you were done. You want to buy some stuff too?
I do, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll go for vehicle purchase recommendations with Public Works Director Jim Scheid.
So, yeah, I have two vehicles to add to our purchase list. We actually recently recommended purchasing of a long list. These two are in addition to that. And so these are two F-150s we're recommending for, for approval to local Ford. They were the only bid we received on these vehicles in particular, but pricing was as expected and actually a little bit below. In the case of these vehicles, the reason they weren't included in the, in the previous recommendation is the upfitting. So we're, we're having difficulty getting upfitters to do, so all the accessories that go into mainly a police vehicle, there's lots of things. We buy a base vehicle and then it's outfitted with all of the technical equipment that goes along with law enforcement. And we're having issues finding vendors that can do that in a timely manner and even bid on it, honestly. It's a very difficult market. So in this case, with these two, we're going to be doing it in-house. These are relatively light in that upfitting need and something that we can do in-house. And so that's why they were separated and actually a little bit delayed in the process of getting these bids is because we will be doing that upfitting ourselves. So as far as the price and what was budgeted for these, the, the cost of these is significantly under what was budgeted at 108, 108,000 is under our budget of 140,000, but we'll be doing that upfitting ourselves, which we anticipate to be about $10,000 per vehicle, putting that, our total close to 130 total, which again is still significantly under budget of 140. So we feel comfortable doing it. We have done it in the past and on occasion are doing updates and repairs to the upfitting we have. So we feel like this is in our wheelhouse and necessary for timing. It would, these vehicles would be delayed much longer if we didn't do it ourselves. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is the upfitting similar to like the chief's truck, which has lights, but they're inside? So like we would add the lights or the necessary computer equipment?
Yep. Lights, radios, other communication equipment, a lot of different technical pieces going there, but mostly lights. You'll see the hidden lights or even the cab lights, things like that, that those are what we're, would be adding.
And our patrol staff, they, they are not using these trucks. I think they're using those other fours, right?
Yep.
Like who's using these trucks? Not name specific, but like?
Commanders. Tim might be able to answer. I think this is commanders that these go to.
Command staff and investigators?
Yeah, I believe at the command level. I guess I don't know their titles, but.
Okay.
Both are commanders, official commanders.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about this purchase? Okay. And are we seeing this tomorrow night or in two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay. So if people think of something else, they have two weeks to ask you or to receive any feedback?
Yep.
Great. Okay.
All right, now I'm done.
Now you're done. Now we'll move on to City Attorney Chris Dowsey to talk about the amendments to the contract for the sale of Historic City Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you know, we are currently under contract to sell Histor, sell Historic City Hall. That occurred in 2023. It, it's being purchased by the same owners of the. That occurred in 2023. It's being purchased by the same owners of the soon to be Rathbone Hotel. As we know, costs for renovations have skyrocketed within the past couple of years. And there were discussions with executive session as to the contract. So with that, the owners have asked to get some of their earnest money back. In exchange for that, we are able to market Historic City Hall to any potential buyer. However, if we do find a potential buyer, a secondary buyer, the owners of Rathbone would be able to have a right of first refusal as to the current contract that we have in place. So that, those are going to be the only amendments to the agreement.
Okay, to be clear, the right of first refusal generally refers to the right to purchase upon the same terms and conditions as a satisfactory offer. But what we're saying here is this first right of refusal would be to purchase under the current contract terms, not a new offer term?
That is correct. So what we have agreed to with, with those owners of the Rathbone, it would go under the terms of that agreement, whereas if they do not wish to, to go through with it, and we do have the secondary buyer, we would go through a completely different contract, different terms, everything as to that.
So Chris, for clarification also, if we have a secondary buyer that approaches us or that is in the pipeline and they put an offer out that if they choose to utilize their right of first refusal, that means they have to purchase it at that time?
Correct, within 30 days.
Within 30 days. So they can't like default back to the original timeline?
No, they would have to purchase within 30 days, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
It sounds like a win-win for both parties. It sounds like a good amendment to the contract.
Yeah.
We're each getting something that we want.
I just have a question. It was concerning the, I lost it. The closing date. And let's see. With a closing date of August 2023, it's past that, so that'll be changed to?
That's correct. The original, original agreement had a closing date in August of 2023. However, we did a, what's called an amend and extend, so we amended the contract to extend the contract out. So currently, the closing date is now August of '24. So this was back in August of '23 before the actual closing date occurred. I don't believe I, I may have been a party to that. There was another executive session as to amending the contract. And then there was a, a special council meeting where that was approved.
I remember that. I was just concerned as to, this particular agreement still had the old date on it and nothing was new on it. So I, I wanted to make sure that we're still on for August of 2024.
That is correct. We are still on for August of 2024 at this point in time.
Which brings up a further clarification point with August 24, August of 2024 being the closing date under the current contract. This right of first refusal would only extend to and include August of 2024, but not extend beyond August 2024.
Correct, correct. We are not extending the contract date. And again, there would be that, that triggering event where if we were approached by a secondary buyer and they wanted to get onto contract, that would then trigger a 30-day window for Rathbone Propco to then either close on the, the current contract within 30 days or allow us to further deal.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I do apologize. This is going to be tomorrow. So this is going to be pushed quickly.
Okay. And then next up, we have some further discussion about the, a new approach to our citizen interactive sessions following some discussion last month. And so Deputy City Manager Anne Morgan-Daylor is going to tell us about the proposed plan.
All right. I will keep this brief and I'm happy to talk more if you desire.
How about this, though? This isn't something we'll be voting on. This is more of, this is the plan going forward that we'd like to do and speak now if you think this is a terrible idea.
Absolutely. No vote is required by counsel. We talked at the last work session about slightly amending the process for the citizen interactive sessions. We have not been getting much interest from citizens as the way that it's formatted now. And we know that it's important to you all to be transparent and available to citizens. So we had a few ideas for changing the process. Mostly one is to restate the purpose of the citizen interactive sessions. That's included in the outline. It's to facilitate in-person conversation between citizens and city counselors about topics of interest to citizens. And we are going to try and open it up a little bit more broadly to try and interest citizens who may just want to come and tell you what it's like from their perspective to live in Montrose. It doesn't necessarily mean that they have a pet project or even something that they want to see changed, but it would give you input into meeting new citizens and hearing their perspectives so that later on down the line, when you're budgeting or making decisions, you'll have that kind of feedback in your mind. And also restating that counselors are not expected to take any action as a result of the citizen interactive sessions so that citizens are reminded again what the outcome likely is of these sessions. And it's that counsel receives information, that there's a relationship created between counsel and the citizen, and the citizen knows that they are heard and they've shared their perspective with counsel. The process would look very similar to what it's been like, though we would do a big marketing push soon between now and March to try and engage citizens and have them respond to questions on a form, which I provided to you. Again, those questions are more broad about, you know, what could counsel do to make it better to live in Montrose? And then we would ideally gather at least 10 responses and we could schedule those citizens for the rest of the year, one each month during our scheduled citizen interactive sessions. And then after each session, the mayor pro tem would follow up directly with the citizen in order to let them know that their comments had an impact and how, and then connect them to the staff member that might be most applicable so that if things come up later on, they have that direct contact with a staff member. You'll see that in the packet, there's also a form that I'm proposing counsel would have a hard copy of at each citizen interactive session in order to make notes on it about things that you learned or things you appreciated about the conversation. Those forms would be given to the mayor pro tem at the end of the meeting so that the mayor pro tem could use that feedback to share with the citizen when they write an email or make the phone call. And I think that's everything for now.
Thanks. I think it's important that we keep trying to engage the community in this way. But I appreciate, after six months of trying it one way without a lot of good interaction, or without a lot of interaction, the interaction we had was good. It was, it was not necessarily working great. I like that we're looking at ways to improve it and go forward. So thanks for all the work.
Yes, and thank you to Councilperson Reed for his input. We wanted to try and make sure that this would be useful for counsel as well as for citizens and welcome all input about other things that might need to be amended in order for you to get a benefit out of this important time with citizens.
I kind of like the, the forms that you proposed. I thought it gives the council on an individual basis, if we're not heard here at the meeting specifically, that we could comment there and that there would be somebody to follow up, but rather than, okay, we're going to look at it or something like that. We actually have some documentation that says that we'll look at it or we've looked at it and we understand and we heard and we're voicing our opinion. So, thank you. Good job.
Great. I like that we are having the mayor pro tem lead this effort because I think sometimes that position on council is not, doesn't really have any other responsibility than stepping in when the mayor's not available. And I think this will help prepare the mayor pro tem to be mayor and interact with community and residents and do that stuff. So I like that part, too. Okay. Next up then, I'll turn it over to City Manager Bill Bell, childcare discussion.
So this should be very quick. I just want to mention that as we've discussed in the past, many organizations are facing similar issues here in Montrose. We heard about the housing costs from Jason, and we know childcare is a big issue as well. We are losing another one or two employees from the city over this next month due to lack of childcare in our community. They're having to move out of state so grandparents and parents can help. And so it's now, we've, we've done the childcare study out in the community with Bright Futures and some of those other groups. It's now hit home as an organization for us. And so I just want to throw out the idea to start preliminary research. And if you all, if a majority of you give me the thumbs down, I won't spend any staff time on it. But I didn't want to spend staff time on it unless I had some kind of a head nod. But I would like to entertain the idea of a city-owned and operated daycare facility. That would be not only for us as an employer, but also be available for other public employers and then some private slots to the community as well. We had a manager's meeting and Greg Caton was here, the manager for Grand Junction. Grand Junction's already done a similar thing. And he had positive things to say about it. There's challenges, of course, but for the most part, he said it's been really good for employee retention and recruitment. And they're spreading it out past just the city of Grand Junction as well. So there's some good models around Colorado and even here regionally if we want to at least look at that option.
Your concept would be city employees first, then other public employees, and then if there was still space available, the private sector?
Correct.
I've spoken to a number of my colleagues across municipalities, and a lot of the municipalities are starting to go this direction. And I think it's fantastic and I think it's timely. And I think that if we can get ahead of the curve and help retain our good employees, that I absolutely support that.
Have we looked at the county? Would they be willing to participate in anything like this with us?
I have not had much discussion with anyone until I just wanted to gauge interest. If I was going to get fired just bringing it up, I didn't want to talk to the candidates, but they would be the first ones I would talk to as partners, yeah.
Bill, over 10 years ago, I took a leadership training program. And one of the things that came up at that program was how to help women in jobs and stuff like that. And there were three things that came up that I still think are very important. One was training. Two was transportation. And one of the things that was the most important at that time was childcare. And so with the fact that I have grandkids that have childcare problems, I think it's something that we should look into as a community effort.
I almost feel like I don't need to say anything because I've been pushing for more childcare from day one. And I'm so glad to see, I mean, the investment we made in the survey, the investment we've made in supporting some nonprofit childcare in our community. And I'm excited to say, to see us continue to, to work on providing childcare. At this time, it feels like, this time it's personal. It's for our organization primarily, the need and that we're driving this. I would hope that we can continue to focus, though, on childcare across our community and not just our need as an employer, but our whole community's need because it's an economic issue across our community. We're just now seeing it in our own house, so to speak. But yeah, as someone who relied on childcare so I could work and provide for my family, yeah, I'm all in favor.
So would the next thing that counsel would hear from you would be kind of an outline of what it would, might look like?
Yeah, I'll, it sounds like I have enough head nods to at least look into it. So I'll probably talk with Lori Sharp right away. I know she's helping with the Unify America study as well. And then she was a big part of the Bright Futures piece and is really a big player in tying all the entities together. So her and I'll meet right away and start strategizing. And then I'll research the idea of partnering some other public employers. And then I have had discussions related to this issue. There's just, it's going to be hard to come up with a feasible way to build a multimillion dollar childcare facility that serves the entire community. And what's most likely going to be the most feasible moving forward are having smaller entities. Difficulty with that is each one has to have a director of some sort. And then you have the staff turnover and inability to recruit into early childhood because it doesn't pay very well. One advantage municipal employer would have is those would be benefited full-time positions, more attractive. And so I'd like to talk to Lori and others about what's the proper sizing. I know Chrissy Simmons will be a big part of that as well. Is it 30? Is it 40, 50? What size of building would we need for that kind of thing? And then look at existing buildings rather than building new. And there's already a few I have in my mind that would be close to our civic campus. And so I think probably the next few weeks would be doing a little bit of research and then bring kind of a rough outline to all of you just to talk about it some more.
Bill, would that include grant funding also?
I think the potential is out there to receive, I already reached out to Patrick from DOLA. And there is DOLA funding available to help with this type of thing for building acquisition or remodel. And if you're buying a building, you can use that as your match to receive the state funding as well. So there is a lot of outside money available for childcare.
Okay, thank you.
Would that be anything the Recreation District would be involved or interested in?
Yeah, so several, I'm sure they would. Several years ago, I don't know if many of us have had the conversation, but the city, I was pushing several years in a row, the creation of a public healthcare clinic for all of our public employers, and we would team up. And at that time, we had the, the city and the county and the rec district and all points and a few other. And we were looking at the school district at that time, and we just couldn't get it passed with the teachers group because of limiting the choice. But, so we have gone down this road of a public employer type scenario, but it was for health clinics. But I plan on presenting it in the same fashion to our other cohorts out in the community. So we've kind of done this a couple of different times. So I would reach out to rec district and all of our other public employers. But I think there will be some need to offer to the private sector as well. We don't want just public and we want to fill all the slots. So it would be just kind of in that priority basis or, or pay in advance to reserve certain slots for each entity or whatever. Still too early. That's a lot of details. So thank you.
Thanks. Look forward to seeing what you come up with. Okay, general city council discussion. Okay, I have a couple just, just different dates to make sure you all have on your calendar and you're aware of some stuff coming up. We have all been invited to attend Unify Montrose's presentation this evening at the pavilion where they're going to talk about childcare. The city's employee banquet is this Thursday night, and we're all invited to that. You should have probably RSVP'd by now. And then there are, there's an upcoming State of the City, actually, and I was going to ask Bill to tell us more about that and counsel's role in that. So can I pivot over to you for that?
Sure. So we have talked about this for a few years now. This is actually the first year it's coming to fruition, so we're really excited. There are other communities across Colorado that do a State of the City address. And it's a combo of elected officials and staff that come together one time a year to do an annual report out to the community on some of the great things from the prior year and some of the great things leading into this year. And so it's kind of a highlight reel for the community. So this year, we've reserved the pavilion on February 26th at 5:30 PM for the State of the City address. And hopefully this will be well attended by the community. We'd love to fill all 600 seats in the auditorium and get it on people's radar that we're going to be doing this every year. And as part of that, it would be a one-hour presentation with speakers and videos and things like that. But then an hour after that, out in the lobby, it would be an open house style with booths and tables set up with different departments and divisions there to talk to the community and mingle around, have some snacks and those types of things. And so a two-hour event total with half of it being interactive is the idea. And then we would have welcome by the mayor, and then I'll probably say a few things, and then have different people from different departments presenting. And then hopefully, if counsel's available, we'd have a counsel table set up. And then I know I'll be with Scott Murphy at a URA slash. Scott Murphy at a URA/infrastructure table, and just a variety of other groups there.
Do you guys like the idea of having a council table, that we can have at least two people at a time standing at while other people are mingling? And if we put it next to the URA table, capital project table, we can be available to hear and be part of both?
Okay.
Awesome. I've never been one to tell you what to wear, but it might be the perfect opportunity for us to all wear our matching polos.
To wear what?
Our matching polo shirts.
Burgundy polo shirts.
The burgundy polo shirt. I probably wear mine the least, but I think maybe it would be, you wear what you want, just an idea. Fantastic. That sounds great. I'm excited to see. I know when the city presents that kind of information at forum, the room is packed. So I think if we can somehow make sure that that same audience knows about this event, that it will get a good attendance. Yeah, people who want to know the inside scoop.
Can we use the forum mailing list?
We cannot. Sorry. Forum mailing list is for forum. Okay. But we can all talk it up. How about that? And I think social media is going to start seeing some advertising for it today. Okay. Also, upcoming events. Oh, to be aware that our next, the third week of the month, there is a city holiday on Monday, the 19th. And so our work session and our city council meeting will both be on Tuesday. And in light of the changes to the citizen interactive session, there will not be one in February, while the mayor pro tem and staff work to gear up to start that again, under the new format in March. So that's kind of a, and that is reflected on your council calendar. Any other council updates before I ask for staff updates? Okay. How about any other staff updates? You always have some construction update, no?
Sure.
The really challenging storm line at the roundabout is done.
Oh, good.
That's a big deal. So the big four footer that's, you know, 18 feet down or so is flowing again.
Good.
Flowing nicely. Onto sewer. And yeah, I think the only, kind of their smaller one, Flex Park has started construction. We talked about Tributary tonight. Another big capital, or not, or important, not big. Capital project was the sidewalk extension Ogden. So that's currently out to bid, so that'll be coming up pretty soon, down by the new apartments going in down there. And yeah, Move Mo, we have the surface contract ready to bring pretty soon. And then the big one hopefully goes out to bid here in about a week. So week and a half, towards the end of next week. So those are the big ones for the year.
Sounds good. How about snow removal with our new updated communication with mostly private contractors removing snow? How's that going?
Going as expected, I guess. It's a little bit of a challenge. But we're getting through. So I think, you know, I almost wish it snowed more, so that we could practice a little bit. So anyway, we had a lot of good conversations, I think, through the last snowstorm we had, that we were able to educate and get a lot of contractors kind of used to the process. And it went well. But again, I wish we could do it, you know, several times in a row to get good at it. But we'll be surprised next time it snows again, so.
It's one of the many reasons why we wish it would snow more. That, and, you know, our water supply.
Yeah.
Any other staff updates that we need to be aware of?
Sure. Not so much an update as a reminder. We just had a very high turnout for an item at Planning Commission that is coming before city council. I just want to, I sent out an email reminder, but I just wanted to verbalize it as to not having any, engaging in any ex parte communication with any community members about upcoming agenda items that are quasi-judicial in nature. And I won't go further, but I know there have been emails sent out to the council as a whole. But if anybody's sending them out individually, just not respond.
And you will make those a part of the record?
Yes, the email that was sent to council, the one that I know about, I don't know if there were others, that will be part of the record. Yes.
Does that include staff communicate?
How do you mean?
Well, we received a notice from the city manager's office supporting the, would that be part of that ex parte communication? I guess I don't know.
I guess I'm not really sure what, so if it's a, an email from staff, if it's going to all council members, that's likely not going to be ex parte communication, unless it is going to be more explanatory in nature than what is going to be said at the council meeting tomorrow. And I'm just going to use this agenda item specifically. But if an individual staff member individually emails you and gives you additional extra information, yes, that would be our ex parte communication.
I think what most likely happens, and maybe Chris and I can do a little role-playing, but a citizen comes up to me at the grocery store, and they say...
Hey, Barbara, I really don't like this agenda item that's coming up.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. I say, hold up, hold up. Wait, I'm going to stop you right there. Are you talking about that rezoning thing?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to stop you right there. I can't talk to you about that rezoning thing. If you want to talk to me about, in general, you like our snow removal or something, but if it's about that particular rezoning thing, I can't have a conversation with you, because then I wouldn't be able to vote on Tuesday night, because council has to have the same information. So I can't have a private conversation. So, you know, you can submit your comments in writing, or you can come and make public comment, but you and I can't talk about it.
Well, thank you for letting me know that.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt you like that.
That's probably not what you would really say, but...
I think most people would be generally positive, and once they understand fully that, yes, if you in fact get more information as to a quasi-judicial item, something that you will be voting on, that you wouldn't be able to vote as a whole, I think they would be more than, well, hopefully, more than cordial.
Thanks for your improv skills. I didn't tell you we were going to do that ahead of time.
That's okay. You know, I feel as though acting was my calling. I'm kidding.
So, okay. So do, I do, based on the fact that Planning Commission had a lot of public comment, we may receive a lot of public comment tomorrow night. So please don't plan on the meeting being short tomorrow night. Make sure you are here for it.
It is the last agenda item.
It is the last agenda item. Should we move, should we, we make everyone, well, we can talk about the order of the agenda.
Should we move it to the front?
I mean, if we move it, if we move, well, I guess we could just talk about it now. If we move it to the front, knowing that these people are here to make a public comment, I don't necessarily think it's to anyone's benefit to make people sit through the rest of our council meeting.
So we had other public here that will be much shorter. So we didn't want them to sit here for two hours on an issue that's not related to them. So
Perfect. Okay.
Most of those people take up a long period of the meeting. So we actually were having it later. Am I remembering that correctly?
Okay. So we've thought about it, and we've, okay, perfect. Okay, great. Anything else for today's work session? Okay, thank you. Then we are done right before 12.